Good evening, everyone. I welcome you to the June 11, 2019, meeting of Mayor and Council. I will officially call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Our first order of business is our invocation, which will be given by Councilmember Danny Carter, followed by a pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Amen. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Okay, we have some ceremonial presentations, and I'll do these one at a time. I understand that Dwayne Brazier is not with us here tonight, but he's celebrating five years with the City of Villarica. And Dwayne works, Tom, with Jamison, with Jamison Green. Mark Bresert, if you will come forward. All our employees are important to us and special to us, but this guy right here kind of started with me. It says on here he started five years ago, and he works for our Recreation Department. But I'll tell you a little bit more about him. Mark was one of our inmate supervisors with Carroll County for five years or more?
More than that.
More than that?
Yeah.
This seemed like...
Two thousand and thirty.
Yeah, wow. So, but he did a really good job for us and took the leap up and became a city employee and has done a tremendous job for us. So, thank you for five years of service plus. You want to take them out, or no? You know what, I think there's a $1,000 check in there, too.
Yep. That'd be great.
Thanks, Mark.
Yeah, thank you.
And our second one is the chief here. Chief, are you going to do this one?
There's no cliff notes on it.
Hello, hello.
So, I'd like to honor Blake Theory for ten years of service. Blake was one of my students at West Georgia that I kind of recruited and sought and begged to come work with us. Blake's been with us. He's been a patrolman, been a corporal on the shift. He currently serves as an investigator. Does an awesome job for us. Just think the world of him. Great kid. Just recently found out he's going to be a father again for his third child, so he's excited about that. So, Blake, if you'll come up. Congratulations.
Okay. We also have three oaths of office this evening to give. The first one is to a person that is very near and dear to my heart. He was the mayor of the City of Villarica for many years, including the most important year in my life, which was the first year I worked there. He was the mayor when I was hired. So, if you ever want to blame somebody, this guy that you blame right here. But he was the mayor, and his sweet sister was a dear soul and one of my best friends and a second mother to me, Hazel Roberts, and I miss her every day. And so, if you'll come up, Monroe, we will. And this is a long, long oath of office. It's not three... Okay. Monroe, good to see you.
Good to see you, sir.
All right. And this is for our Housing Authority, and it's a very important board, and we have kind of revamped that, I guess, since I've been the mayor and become more involved as a council, and I think they've been more responsive to us as well. You know, that's an important function of our city, and thank you for agreeing to do that. And so, I'm going to read the oath, and at the end, if you'll say, I will, or I do. Raise your right hand. I, Monroe Spake, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Georgia according to the law and the best of my judgment and ability. I am not the holder of any public money due to the state accounted for. I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, nor any one of the several states, nor any foreign state. Neither am I an officer or employee of the City of Villarica. I am a resident of the place required by law. I do further swear to be bound by the following. Number one, I pledge myself to the professionalism of housing commissioners throughout my own efforts and through the mutual efforts of my colleagues and by all other proper means available. Number two, I pledge to view my service on the Housing Commission as an opportunity to serve my community, my state, and nation because I support the objectives of providing a decent, safe, and sanitary home and as living... And I think it's supposed to be, and a suitable living environment for every American family. Number three, I pledge that I recognize that my responsibilities are to serve in this capacity as a government official, a community leader, and an advocate for the Commission, its programs and objectives. Number four, I pledge myself to seek and maintain an equitable, honorable, and cooperative association with fellow public housing officials and all others who are concerned with the proper and professional management of professional housing developments. Number five, I pledge to try to make decisions in terms of the most economical and efficient method toward the best interest of all citizens, particularly those of low and moderate income. Decisions will provide an equal opportunity to all citizens regardless of race, creed, sex, or age. Number six, I will recognize that my responsibility is not to make the day-to-day management decisions of the authority, but to see it as run by carrying out policymaking, planning, and appraisal functions, and by providing direction and taking formal action in support of those functions. And number seven, I will pledge to refuse to represent special interests or partisan politics or to use any commission for personal gain or for the gain of friends or supporters. I recognize that although I have been appointed by the city government, my responsibility is to the entire community. And your term of office is June 1, 2019, to May 31, 2024. If you will say, I will.
I will.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
We'll get some signatures right over here. Monroe, we'll get some signatures. Save you a trip. Our second oath of office tonight is for Andy Hill. Andy, if you'll please come forward. And Mr. Hill has agreed to serve on our Downtown Development Authority. And like our Housing Authority, we have tried to revamp that since my time in office, and this council has been firmly behind that effort. And we're trying to improve downtown. I call it one block at a time. And the DDA is an important function of that and works hand-in-hand with our Community Development Department and officials and really does a little bit of everything. And we have other DDA members in the building right now. So, again, if you will just raise your right hand and then at the end say, I will. I, Andy Hill, do solemnly affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties as an appointed board member of the Downtown Development Authority. I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due to this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof. I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States or any other state or any foreign state which I by the laws of the State of Georgia and prohibited from holding. I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and laws of the State of Georgia. I will perform the duties of my office in the best interest of the City of Villarica to the best of my ability without fear, favor, affection, reward, or expectation thereof. And your term of office is from July 1, 2019, to June 30, 2024. Congratulations. You want to get a photo? And last, but certainly not least, Ms. Nancy Stoltz Jeffress, if you'll come forward. Did I pronounce your last name right? Jeffress?
Jeffress.
Okay. She has agreed to serve on our Cemetery Commission. And like our other committees, I say this about all our committees, but we have completely redone our Cemetery Commission. That is a very viable board in the City of Villarica. That's where many of, most of our forefathers of people that built this city are buried here in the city cemeteries. And I will also point out that Alisa does a tremendous job of heading up that committee, and we've seen a lot of effort since she's been in charge of that. So, thank you to Alisa. So, I won't read... That's not your oath. That's the agenda. So, if you'll just raise your right hand. I, Nancy Stoltz...
I, Nancy Stoltz.
No, just say your last name so I don't mispronounce it.
Jeffress.
Okay, Jeffress. Do solemnly affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties as an appointed board member of the Cemetery Commission. I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due to this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof. I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States or any other state or any foreign state which I by the laws of the State of Georgia and prohibited from holding. I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and laws of the State of Georgia. I will perform the duties of my office in the best interest of the City of Villarica to the best of my ability without fear, favor, affection, reward, or expectation thereof. And your term of office from, is from July 1, 2019, to June 30, 2024. Congratulations. You want to get a photo? And last, but certainly not least, Ms. Nancy Stoltz Jeffress, if you'll come forward. Did I pronounce your last name right? Jeffress?
Jeffress.
Okay. She has agreed to serve on our Cemetery Commission. And like our other committees, I say this about all our committees, but we have completely redone our Cemetery Commission. That is a very viable board in the City of Villarica. That's where many of, most of our forefathers of people that built this city are buried here in the city cemeteries. And I will also point out that Alisa does a tremendous job of heading up that committee, and we've seen a lot of effort since she's been in charge of that. So, thank you to Alisa. So, I won't read... That's not your oath. That's the agenda. So, if you'll just raise your right hand. I, Nancy Stoltz...
I, Nancy Stoltz.
No, just say your last name so I don't mispronounce it.
Jeffress.
Okay, Jeffress. Do solemnly affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties as an appointed board member of the Cemetery Commission. I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due to this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof. I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any foreign state which I by the state laws of the State of Georgia and prohibited from holding. I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and laws of the State of Georgia. I will perform the duties of my office in the best interest of the City of Villarica to the best of my ability without fear, favor, affection, reward, or expectation thereof. And your term of office from June 1, 2019, to May 31, 2022.
I will.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
While she's doing that, just to kind of summarize, you know, a community is no better than the citizens that live in it and are involved in it. So, for those of you that have any ambition to be on a committee, call City Hall, talk to Alisa, or call me, or just hit me up on Facebook, and we would love to see everybody in this office. I think everybody in the room pretty much has been asked to be on a committee, but if you haven't, you are hereby invited to turn in your application and to be considered for one of those committees. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we need your picture.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, we have moved, we'll move on to the adoption of the agenda. Do I hear a motion that we either amend or adopt?
I have an item I need to add to the agenda. I guess it would be A2. I want to add the appointment of Mac Pilgrim to the plan of zoning for the Ward 5 position that's been vacated by Christina.
Second.
A motion second to amend the agenda. Where was that item going to be?
How about A2?
A3?
I have a two. Two.
A motion second, any discussion?
I have no objection, but Mac's not here. Do you want to do the appointment and let him? That's fine.
That's what we normally do.
Yeah, I've already talked to him, and he's willing, more than willing to serve.
Okay, we have a motion second, all in favor? The agenda is amended. Okay?
Make a motion, we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
A motion second, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, we have reached the public comment portion of the meeting. Anyone wishing to give public comment, please do so at this time. State your name and address for the record, and please limit your remarks to three minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Cindy Britt. I'm at 9500 East Tyson Road, Villarica. And we lease a space at 407 Main Street where we operate Hicktown Brewing right downtown. Let me give you these so you're not rustling around. I'm here because of the sidewalk, the ADA compliance issue. Last October, I began trying to get the city to consider amending the sidewalk to make it ADA compliant. The ADA law, Americans with Disability Law, was written in 1990 to afford civil rights to people with disabilities, and it's been 29 years. So, I think we've had a little bit of time to give some consideration to repairing that Let me back up a little bit. The street right outside my door, last March, 2018, there was some repair to the street due to, or some tearing up of the street due to a water break, and that area has not been repaired. It's not on the sidewalk, it's between the sidewalk and the road. It hasn't been repaired since last March, and it's a danger to people entering and exiting my building. I've notified you, Mayor Reese, of one fall exiting my building through the garage door. There's a little makeshift hump, and nobody knows who built it, how it got there, and what its purpose was, except for maybe to roll something up in there. But my 79-year-old aunt fell, and I made you aware of that. She came from out of town to come visit us and wish us good luck. Since then, I've had a young lady in a wheelchair try to visit us, and her whole family had to lift the wheelchair to get her inside the building. And I've had two seniors on their electric scooters pull up and do this and say, you know, you can't lift this, it's 800 pounds, and go on down the way. And it's not so much about the patronage of my business, it's about the integrity of these people that are being turned away or having to make accommodations to get in and out of my building. Speaking of out, if there was a tragedy, getting them out would be a little bit harder than getting them in, and that's something to consider. In fact, the fire marshal said that's his concern, how they're getting in, but how they're getting out. I guess that's all I really have to say. The one thing I'd like to do is, I know it's on the agenda tonight, and I want to notice, if you've got this form, this is where we had to get a survey for our building, and it's not our building, it belongs to Tom Large, but it's a zero lot line. When you leave the door, nothing belongs. We don't have a porch lit. We don't have anywhere to put anything outside, any display of anything, chairs, tables, anything, nor can we fix that little hump because it doesn't belong to Tom. I don't know who, I guess it's the city's hump. But if you could give some thoughtful consideration to repairing that sidewalk to make it safer for walking people and for people utilizing mobility, such as wheelchairs and scooters, I appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
Helen Gaston, 403, Shady Valley Drive, Carrollton, Georgia. I just saw on the agenda that you had, you were discussing the signed ordinance, and I'm in the back if you happen to have any questions about billboards or anything like that, digitals or any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
I feel like I live here. Just wanted to announce our Citizens Academy starts August 1. Great time, have a lot of fun. We feed you, it's free. What else do I need to say? But have a lot of fun. Some people here have been through it, I know. So, please consider it. I'm going to leave applications out front, so if you want to pick one up, let us know. Thank you.
You want to speak about the youth Citizens Academy that you're working with?
The youth academy starts next month. I think next month at Milllake Elementary School. It's for 4th grade through 8th grade, so it's also free. We do it along with Douglas County Sheriff's Department. They have a ball, they get to do all kind of cool stuff. They get to shoot BB guns and have competitions. It's a lot of fun, too, so please consider doing that. We can get you an application downstairs for that.
And thank you, Sheriff Pounds, if you're watching for your cooperation, working with us.
That's right.
Anybody else? Okay, we will close the public comments portion of the meeting. Our next item is the governing body, and, well, no, next item is council updates. And I'd just like to remind everybody that early voting for commission chair is this week. I voted today, as did my wife, and please get out and vote. That's a very important position for the future of this county, and we're in two counties, as most of you know, Douglas and Carroll. And unlike myself and a lot of other elected officials, the chairman of the Carroll County Commission is actually a day-to-day operation employee and actually runs the county. They actually administer the things that go on, and the employees report to them. So, that's a very important position, so please get out and vote. Early voting is this week down at Carroll County in Carrollton, and it'll be next Tuesday, the 18th, at your voting precinct. So, please vote. Any other council updates?
I have a few. And I just want to add at the top of my little list that I'll be quick on is Ms. Jeffress, who just got sworn in today for the Cemetery Commission. Her, okay, kids, don't get mad at me for this, but her children are the ones that volunteered their time with her to clean up the cemetery at Punkin Town. Gosh, it was back before winter, I know that. And so, we just want to thank you for that and appreciate what you all did. One thing that the city manager said this would be appropriate time to bring this up is a request to develop a policy having to do with the display of our flags for holidays and that sort of thing. We had some confusion around Memorial Day, and since employees aren't here, who's going to be there to put flags at half-mast in the morning and then put them to full staff at noon? And so, I'm hoping with just bringing this up that we will do that, and we won't be second-guessing or calling one another on a weekend, wondering where the flags are. And this includes the downtown flags. Aside from that, I just wanted to mention there is no early voting this time. I wasn't even sure. This is a special election. We usually have a week of early voting in Villarica. All the three weeks of early voting is down at the county office, so they'll only be up here the election day on Tuesday. You know how I'm always looking for stuff on economic development? So, I'm reading the paper, and I find out the Corner Cafe down in Carrollton, they've been very successful. They've been there since May of 94. And so, I'm reading the article because I'm always trying to learn who's doing what, and I find out they may just be looking for a place to start another restaurant. So, last time I did that, didn't get followed up on right away, so let's do this, let's call these people, let's tell them why not Villarica, let's tell them what we have. So, any of this information you want from me, let me know. And lastly, the governor, the governor's administration has launched their website for, it's called Georgian's First Commission. They want input, and this is really strategic for our downtown, they want input from small businesses, wouldn't just be downtown, small businesses, they want feedback as to what makes it difficult for your business to operate. Are there regulations that are a problem? They want that feedback, and if they're asking for it, I think we need to give it to them, and I'm grateful. Staff is going to help make sure that we get this out to our, you know, as well as we can, website, whatever, word of mouth, get this out. You want to say something, Janet?
Yeah, the survey that you're speaking about, we actually put that online last week on the street.
Great, okay. And so, if you're in one of those businesses, just say, hey, the governor's asking for your input. Let's try to get the word out so that we can make it more business-friendly, not just in Villarica, but around the state.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Seeing none, we will move along then to Tab A, governing body. Our first item of business is approval of minutes. Councilmembers, you have the minutes of the May 28, 2019 minute meeting before you, and I would entertain a motion.
I move to amend the minutes I shown there. Under ceremonial presentations, it says that tabled the reappointment of Matthew Mump to hand to the Downtown Development Authority. That motion passed, my appointment passed, I should say. On the civic clerk, it still says.
So, maybe we should table that.
We did address it with that one.
I make a motion, we table the approval of minutes.
We could just amend it. You don't have to.
I don't.
That's your call.
Do it however you want to do it. I haven't seen them, so I didn't know that error existed.
You made a motion, so, motion before me, so do I hear a second to table it until the next meeting?
I've got no problem with that. I'll second it.
A motion second to table to the next meeting, any discussion? Not, all in favor? Is unanimous. Okay? Item number two is to approve the revised animal control ordinance, and Councilmember Leslie McPherson has been a strong advocate of this, and I will let her take the lead, as she should.
Okay, well, before, before I table the item that I put on the agenda, I'd like to say a couple things. Because basically, I asked for this to be put on the agenda. I'm not sure why. I received no phone call, but once I saw the cover sheet, it basically sabotaged the efforts of what I was trying to do. And so, I'm, before I table it, I just want to mention these couple things. The cover sheet mentions that the city, well, the city attorney has informed us that the county's not going to take it up. Realize our county commission right now is missing two members that are running for the commission chairman, and so they don't have a quorum. They can't pass things right now. They gave us a draft back in April, and we approved the language that they had come up with. Based on the city attorney's advice, staff recommends that we wait, this is the cover sheet, wait until the county approves a final draft of the revised ordinance before we act. Also, it is staff's understanding that the county will only enforce the animal control ordinance that they have in place so that any changes that Villarica might make won't be enforced, will not be enforced, until the county adopts the same changes. So, there's not a whole lot of sense in adopting something if it can't be enforced. The history of this is back about a year and a half ago, and I'll try to wrap this up in under five minutes. About a year and a half ago, we started addressing this because we, a number of us felt like there were inadequacies in the, in the current ordinance. It was the consensus of at least three of the county commissioners that there was a problem and revisions needed to be made. So, it took a long time, but they did come up and put the wording together. Carroll County Commission heard from the public, they heard from the Humane Society, their staff and the Animal Control Department was very involved, and that's where they came up with the consensus on the wording. When they sent it to us, it was not a preliminary draft, it was what they asked us to adopt. The wording I was going to ask for us to adopt is what they've asked us to adopt. And it's not a new ordinance, it would be a change and addition of language, not a new ordinance, just addition. We approved their language in April. The cover sheet asked if it can be enforced. Per the former Carroll County Commission, in the city manager's office about a year ago, I believe it was last summer, after a meeting, Marty Smith, face-to-face, eye-to-eye, told me that according to our intergovernmental agreement, they had to enforce what we passed, that we could even pass stricter ordinance or parts of the ordinance than the county had, and that they would be obligated to enforce it. But he and I both agreed that it would be easier for code enforcement and overall if we had a uniform policy for the whole county. So, that would be the best-case scenario if we could come to agreement on that. Others were standing around. It was not a formal meeting at that time, so I cannot tell you who all heard that, except that I got it straight from our chairman. Somehow, the rules have changed in the middle of the game, and I'm now being told that that's not what's going on. So, then to make matters worse, I get an email that now we're going to look at Douglas County's ordinance and see if we can come to agreement maybe with county, with Douglas County and Carroll County, because think about it, we're in two counties, there's two different animal control ordinances in effect in our city, one on the Douglas County and the Carroll County side. I can tell you right now there's going to be a problem rectifying them or getting them to agree. Carroll County will not touch. Carroll County will not touch the 24/7 tethering part of the ordinance, which allows you to tether an animal 24/7. Douglas County does not allow that. And Carroll County didn't even want to discuss it in a public meeting. So I doubt that that will happen. But aside from that, I just don't understand why this is being brought up now, because this has been going on for years. Last year, Carroll County enforced their side, Douglas County enforced theirs. The year before, and the year before, and the year before, it was the exact same thing. So I just don't understand why now that seems to be a factor. It would have made it so much easier if somebody would have just called me and said, Leslie, you can put this on the agenda, but just know, we may have some problems, and this is what they are. And we could have discussed it at that point, and I might have said, you know what, let's not even put it on. Because lastly, I'm guessing, based on information I've received, that you've done work on this. Research, maybe put together an ordinance, even though Doug Carroll County lawyer has really got all the wording together, which means it probably costs the city money to do something that you're now telling me, if we pass it, it can't be enforced. Or you're at least saying it's your understanding. I would like to, for somebody to get, at least get that in writing, that shows me that we cannot do what the commission chairman told me face-to-face we could do. So we need to be sure about that. I don't want us to be guessing. And then I make a motion at this time to table this item.
Second.
Table it to when?
Have a motion to second. Table it till, is there a time?
Not till we get clarity on these.
David, I think it would be safe to say that until we have a new commission chairman.
I know, I believe that they're, as I say, I know, I believe that they are going to take this up as soon as they have their first meeting, which, depending upon the runoff, probably will be sometime in July.
So would you amend your motion to say, table until the first meeting in August?
I think we, do we have to put a date on it? Because they were also going to handle it
We don't have to. We just need to say.
In the spring. And then they were going to handle it at their very last meeting, that they had a quorum, and somebody decided to go in and take it off the agenda their last night that they could have voted on it. And I don't know why.
We just don't want it to keep coming up every meeting between now and then.
You're not kidding. That's why I'm saying, I'm afraid to put a date on it.
We should let staff come up with the date, once that meeting has been had and some of these inconsistencies have been worked out. Because that was sort of an issue from the beginning.
Yeah, we now have different facts and different rules by what we're playing by. We need to find out what they are.
So staff brings it back.
So the motion is to, to take this off the agenda indefinitely until we get more direction from the county and state.
Yes, I make a motion to remove this from the agenda until we get more information from the county commission and also additional facts regarding the process for what the city can pass and have enforced. Sorry, that's a little wordy.
I'll second that as well.
Lisa, as you get that. Any further discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Okay. Item number three, which was added, is the potential appointment. And Mr. Carter, go ahead.
Okay. My representative, the Ward Five representative to planning and zoning, has resigned and moved to Atlanta, Christina Tatterback. And we need to keep the planning and zoning board full. So I am making a motion to appoint Mac Pilgrim, and I have talked to Mac, and he's thoroughly, he's ready. He'd love to play, he'd love to be on planning and zoning. I asked him, he said yes. I make motion to appoint Mac Pilgrim to planning and zoning as a Ward Five representative.
Second.
Have a motion of multiple seconds. Any discussion?
I have a question. We're going to appoint him through the end of her term, whatever that is.
That would be appropriate.
Yes, that would be appropriate.
Yeah. Any further discussion?
My only question is, how much time is left on that term?
Two.
I don't know. She's just got appointed, so.
Just two more years.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like, yeah, to wait on her to, she can pull it up pretty quick.
Okay, we'll, we'll know by next meeting. We can put it on there. So have a motion of second and proper discuss. So all in favor? It is unanimous. And we will let Mr. Pilgrim know that he needs to be here next month to be sworn in. Okay, Tab B, community development. Bobby?
Is it next month or next meeting? To be sworn in, next month or next meeting?
Next meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, the printed agenda has the signed ordinance first.
Yeah, they kind of, it's messed up with one on the tablet here.
Actually, we have differing agendas. Mine's different.
Mine's, mine's different for a long.
The easy one first, then, that's all right.
What's the easiest one first?
The signed ordinance, I put it back on here. I think mayor and council have the redline version, the main body redline version. I think Chris did one more page of revisions. We did not advertise public hearing for this tonight. It's just for informational purposes, just to let everybody know where we are. I know Mr. Mecklen sent over several questions concerning the signed ordinance that we've got, that we'll attempt to address here in the next few days. But what we'd like to do is, in fact, I have advertised this for a first reading on the June 25 meeting. And then we'd like to have a second reading, the first meeting in July. This is a very important part of our development ordinance. I know you all heard me harp about it almost every time we get together, but it's important enough. I think we need to have two readings on this. That way, we can, we can continue, continue to revise it right up until we do the actual vote. But we're, we're still receiving comments. We've got it dialed in pretty, pretty tight now, I think. Just want to let everybody know where we are with it.
Bobby, is the redline version online so people can look at it?
It's, yes.
Okay.
That's the one that was uploaded on Civic Clerk.
With the changes, probably not the changes that David has recommended.
Not, not the last one. Chris, I apologize. Chris is in conference the rest of this week. Or he had have it done already, but, but yeah, they will be online, yeah. And they're easy to follow, they strike through in different colors and all that kind of stuff, so.
Bobby, there's, I'm sorry, there are two addendums, but it appeared that the second addendum, the last PDF, included the first one.
Right.
Okay. So really, you can just skip that one and read them. But it's 62, 63 pages, something like that. And I know time is of the essence, but man, it gets complicated.
Yeah, it's, it's very thorough. Chris did a real good job with it. And we've, we've, I think, last count, he, he pulled information from like seven cities all over the metro area and even out of state to, you know, dial in some stuff that's very important.
What was our existing sign ordinance like?
Mayor, it's about 16 pages.
That was a loaded question.
And it, it leaves out a lot, a lot of stuff. In fact, we, we've had some businesses come to us to ask questions about signs that they want to do and can't do them because they're not listed. You know, and we've turned business away, or they've had to pick something else that would work with our current code.
Do you expect another revision or addendum to this? Because we discussed an issue regarding billboards that you were looking for some minutes on. Did you find those?
I found those today, yes, sir.
Will there be a change? Will there be an amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Just to point out, I look back also, and we amended the sign ordinance in 2012, 2013, 2016. Now we're back here again, 2019. So you can see that it's an area that is in a great state of flux based on the law and the needs of the, of the city.
That's a good point. But what I'm hearing is that when council approves those amendments, that sometimes those haven't been posted in the code of ordinances as far as anything, in this case, signs.
Mayor, I was hoping you wouldn't ask me that question.
That was, that was a statement. I didn't.
Well, you know, I
Sounds like he wants to.
I can nod your, I can nod my head and agree with you, but, but we found a, a revision as of March 1, 2016. There were some text amendments done to the entire Article Nine, which is our sign ordinance in the UDC. I found it with the minutes. It was never incorporated into what I use every single day. So I've been doing the wrong things in some areas that I had no idea. So, yes, to answer your question, they will definitely be published and online in the whole nine yards when we get done.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for staff? So you will be bringing this to us at a future council meeting?
June 25, yes, sir.
June 25, thank you, sir. Item number one, which, on my agenda, is item number one. The sign ordinance was number two.
What's the agenda you have?
We have a variance application. Tab VA-03-19. The address is 101 Hunter Industrial Drive. It is a parcel number 01430250065. The applicant is Glenn and Tammy Watts, doing business as Watts Properties. The variance application is to vary the number of parking spaces that our current UDC is requiring on a 10,000-square-foot building. The current UDC requires 67 parking spaces, and that's derived by one space per 150 square feet of gross floor area. Mr. Watts' site is 1.1 acres, and there's no way you could even think about getting 67 spaces. He's managed to get 40 proposed spaces, and that's the, the request, and staff is recommending approval of that variance. And I believe the applicant is present.
Okay. Did the finding of zoning commission see this?
Mayor Planning and Zoning, they don't review variance requests. They should come straight to council.
So since it is here at council, my guess is that we don't have a provision for this situation within the
Correct. I have no administrative allowances at all to do that. The new zoning ordinance will give us some free board to do that, where currently, we don't have that authority to do.
Seems to me that this is a necessary variance.
Questions for staff?
Oh, I was already doing that.
Okay, thank you, sir. The applicant is present. If you would come forward, please, and state your name and address for the record.
Glenn Watts. The address is 101 Hunter Industrial Drive, Villarica.
Council questions for the applicant?
I mean, if I could say something, my proposal on this building is, in addition to my existing building, I have a 15,000-square-foot building that houses my offices and where the customers come to bring their vehicles in to have repair door estimates. This building is going to be for the refinished apartment only. There's not going to be no public access. There's not going to be any deliveries of parts. All that is housed in the main building where I'm at now. This will just be for, and I'm actually going to be moving the paint booths that are in my existing building into this new building, which is going to eliminate actually more cars that are going to be stored outside. They'll be able to be inside. And so, and I have no reason whatsoever that I need even 40 parking spots in that, on that lot. There will be hardly any vehicles stored outside in that property. All the vehicles are stored in the main building that I'm in now.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, this will open up the public comments portion of the meeting. Anyone wishing to give public comment for or against this, please do so at this time. Seeing none, it will revert back to the council for action.
I'll make a motion to approve this parking variance from a required number of spaces of 67 to 40 required spaces, with the condition that all vehicles stored for service be stored inside the building or behind a privacy fence.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Any discussion? Not all in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Tab C, economic development. Janet?
Good evening, mayor and council. The first item I have is to approve the headlining contract and agreement with Alabama Blues Brothers to play the September 28 Summer Concert Series to be held at the Mill Amphitheater. They are requesting $4,000. They're a band that formed in '98. I believe they played at the amphitheater before. They took a five-year hiatus. They're doing a reunion tour this year and requested that they come by and play Villarica. So staff is recommending Alabama Blues Brothers to headline the September 28 Summer Concert Series at the Mill Amphitheater in the amount of $4,000. This is a budgeted item.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the contract and agreement necessary to engage Alabama Blues Brothers as the headlining band for the September 28, 2019 Summer Concert Series in the amount of $4,000.
I'll second. And mayor, would you share some in the discussion?
I will. We have a motion of second. So as far as discussion is concerned, for those of you that have never seen the Alabama Blues, how many of you have actually seen the Alabama Blues Brothers? So few of you. They are a tremendous band. And if you like the Blues Brothers, Dan Aykroyd and John Belushi, the movie, this band is as close to them as you'll ever see. We had them here, I know, once, maybe twice. I can't remember, I can't remember about the second, but I know we had them once, and it was a very well-attended concert. And they're the band that goes out in the crowd, and they're very interactive, and it's a, it's a show. It's a concert. They act like the Blues Brothers. They sound like the Blues Brothers. They have a full-piece band that showed up and scared this mayor to death, because I was the recreation director. I'll tell this little story, if y'all will let me do so. Their band, they have a brass band accompaniment that comes out, and they all came dressed in inmate suits, and they were the exact inmate suit that the inmates that were working with me that night had on. And the first thing I thought was, our inmates have escaped, and they're, they're all musicians going up on the stage somehow or another. But that was kind of a, one of the, it'll be in my book one day. But anyway, good, good band. And when they put that on their page, they have a Facebook page, I saw it immediately, and probably two dozen Villarica residents said, wow, we've got to get these guys here. And I started getting messages, private messages on my Facebook page to get them here. So we hope that that happens, and that's this council's decision. And so that's my input.
Since the mayor didn't mention this, I will mention this part. We kind of have an agreement that we're going to raise the money for the band with private funds. And so that's a challenge we have before us, and so that's one little, little different on this one. But anyway, thank you.
So if you're a business owner in the crowd right now, and you would like to help donate to this cause, please, please see either council member McPherson or myself, because we have kind of taken upon ourselves to help pay for this, and, because I think it's a good event for the city.
I didn't know who the "we" was. I'm glad that y'all settled that. Excellent. I can't wait. I can't wait.
I'm sure you'll be helping us.
Any, any other comments?
Donation for the councilman?
He was the business owner in the
I looked straight at him, but I don't think he was looking, so. I think we'll, I think we'll make it. Any other comments?
Oh, I'm sorry, I did have one question. I read the formal offer agreement. The performance time on that said eight to 10, so two hours, but that could be the whole thing. The signed contract said 90 minutes, and the show contract said 120. I just want to figure out which one it is.
They've agreed, and that's why I attached the formal agreement offer, which they signed to play two hours.
Okay, so it will be the two hours. Great. Okay, thanks.
Any other comments, questions? Call the question, all in favor? It is unanimous.
Along with the band request, comes sound and lighting that will be required. This is considered an A-level show. So John Chevalier, who's been doing all of our shows, and will do all our shows this year, is available and has agreed to do this in, in the amount of $5,000.
We're paying more for the sound and lighting than we are for the band.
Sir?
As sole source, did we bid the sound and lighting?
We simply went with him for consistency, and he's doing all our shows this year, so.
Well, I think, I think your question was, is it not unusual to pay more for the sound and lighting than it is for the band? I think, is that what your
That's part of it, yes. That's part of it, yes.
That's just the, the $4,000 is what we agreed upon and negotiated.
Yeah.
$5,000 for sound.
That is somewhat, you know, in my experience dealing with bands, it is, you know, $4,000 is a really good price for this band. This is a high... But I think when they were here before, they had as good a time as we did. And so I, you know, when they reached out to staff and me and said, we would love to come back to Villarica, so... And they only, I think they had, what, eight, eight across the nation that they were doing, and we were one of those eight.
Correct. I think it's six.
I think it's six, yeah.
Six, and we were one of the six.
Okay, the other part of my question was that we're using the same people for sound and lighting on all the events. How did we establish that this is the people we wanted to use? Nobody else competes to do this?
We bid on that.
Okay, it was bid out.
We bid for the whole year earlier this year.
Okay, that was the question.
We bid for the whole year. The one that's difference about this is this show was not part of that bid. This is a separate show. I have done just a little research. It's not my forte sound, but I don't think we used shoddy sound and lighting in the years past. Since I've been here, I don't think we've used shoddy sound and lighting. I have been told that there is some belief out there that we could get this for between $2,500 and $3,500. I do also think it's a little bit of a challenge to pay $5,000 for a $4,000 band. And also just mention that I've also been told that you can do a sound study, which might come in handy for us sometime, where you can find out for the size of your event, the way your event is, what type of equipment will, what will work, you know, well for you, what will accommodate that crowd outside in that size of location. And I'm also a little concerned about if we're only automatically going with somebody for consistency. Did we check with anybody local? Did we check Carroll County, Douglas County, West Georgia? We can use this, this company. They're from Alabama, and I like Alabama, Roll Tide. But if we could spend money with a, with somebody that's on this side and keep the money here local and keep it in Georgia, that's the way I'd like to see it go. My encouragement would be that we shop this around a little bit and see if we can get a better price. I think that's rather high.
Well, I would just point out that when we looked at this bidding earlier this year, these folks were substantially less.
Yes.
And it does seem to me that using the same company consistently, who knows our stage, who knows our setup out there, makes sense. And if you're talking about saving $1,500 possibly, you're only talking about possibly, it's hard for me to see delaying this, because we did go through this, and we do know that we saved a lot of money with this, by going with this company. But Janet, you can talk more about that. I just...
Is the $5,000 typical for a setup like this? I mean...
When we signed the contract this year, we agreed to pay him for an A-level show at $5,000, so we're keeping that rate consistent, and this is going to be an A-level show. I will say that the next bid that we received, I think four bids for sound and lighting, the next bid after Chevalier was $65,000. John paid $35,500 for the contract this year.
But this is a, this is an add-on show, right?
Regardless of how much you have to pay the band. So, you know, just because you get a great deal on the band doesn't mean you suddenly have to get a great deal on the sound and lighting. We all want to save as much money as we can, but that comparison doesn't make sense.
But this, this $5,000 is in addition to what we agreed to pay him? This is an additional event?
Right, because it's an additional show.
So...
Any other questions for staff?
Just an encouragement to please check around.
I move to accept staff recommendation to approve the sound and lighting services of Chevalier Productions for the September 28, 2019 Summer Concert Series in the amount of $5,000.
Have a motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor? One, two, three, all opposed? One, two, the vote is 3-2. Nick Mount?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm here tonight to discuss the purchase of 20 Crispin UX20 stainless steel air relief valves for our force mains, using budgeted money, Douglas County Splosse money. The current ARVs on the force mains, many are in disrepair, not working, rushed to the point, just years of neglect. These air relief valves are essential to the function, the proper function of the pump stations for efficiency and capacity, you know, and to delay this would just worsen that and possibly cause, again, unnecessary wear and failures in the future. Any questions?
Questions for staff?
What percentage of all the valves that you have to replace does this represent?
Half. We've got about 40 in the system, and then this will cover half of them, and then in this next budget, you'll see the 20, the next 20.
So Tom asked a very good question, and thank you, Tom, for bringing that up. So we are making improvements in the system and replacing meters on a schedule as part of that. A lot of cities and counties that I've been in get deficient on that, and those meters go bad after a certain amount of time, and that not only costs the taxpayer more money, but it also costs the city in some cases more money, which is also taxpayer. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to purchase 20 Crispin UX20 stainless steel air relief valves from Fordaline Water Works for the amount of $28,723.40.
Second.
Have a motion to second. Any discussion? Not all in favor? It is unanimous.
Thank you.
Item number two.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item I have tonight is a request to amend the agreement for engineering services between Brennan Jones Engineering Associates, LLC, for wastewater pump station, manhole structure rehabilitation. We had engaged Brennan and his company last year to do an evaluation of all of our lift stations, and, and also some manholes were included in that investigation at that point in time. So this is to further that effort for us to go ahead and prioritize what needs to be done. Out of that investigative work that he did, we've got areas that have a lot of root intrusion. We have a lot of corrosion issues due to hydrogen sulfide, which attacks concrete and debilitates the structure. We also have active leaks, and also when you do have lead intrusion, that's also another indicator that leaks are present. So the scope of his services will be to do data analysis and pull together not only the information from his, his study, but do some GIS work for us, prioritize these projects, do the design and preparation plans and specifications, assist us with the bidding, put it out on the street for bidding, and then construction oversight for it. And staff is recommending that we do an amendment to his engineering agreement for his professional services in the amount of $35,500. This was not a budgeted item, but the funding source would be Jifa.
Questions for staff?
What was the date of that original agreement that this modifies? And do you know the amount we originally set on that?
Well, I don't remember the original amount, but the original agreement is during the interim when we had an opening in community development after Janet left. He was one of the engineers that we had used as a stopgap for some of that, that work, and then we built upon that over time. So I can tell you the last lift station work that he did, that agreement was, I think, April 28th of last year, and that was in the amount of about...
That was $82,000.
That was $82,000, $83,000.
So the item that Dean just brought is the, is the first thing that we've done...
As a result of his work?
As a result of that study, and this is number two. We're thinking maybe 10 wet wells and 100 manholes that we need to either seal and line or whatever.
So that was originally $82,000, and I guess we have reached that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. You say that, seems like maybe we exceeded it pretty good.
No, but we, that study's been done, what, for six months or so?
Probably six months, yes.
So you're asking to amend that agreement for what we know are part of these ongoing projects and is necessary, but you've capped it at $35,500. Will this conclude Brennan's work for us?
Oh, no.
So why are we only, why are we only asking for this piece? And is it possible to wait and do this in the next budget, or do we need to do this now as part of this planning?
Yeah, well, this, what this is going to do is stop leaks where we're getting rainwater into the manholes and the wet wells.
Your, I think your question, what I'm hearing you say is...
We're treating thousands of gallons of rainwater in both sewer plants.
So this needed to be done yesterday.
And these are going to be the 10 worst wet wells and the 100 worst manholes that he identified while he was doing the lift station work. But in order to do this, we're going to have to go look at all of these individually. So Jimmy's crew's going to have to go out and physically open 100 manholes and evaluate what needs to be done before we have a contractor bid on this and start doing the work.
See if this answers your question, Larry. But this request is to, a part of the overall project of repairing our water and sewer infrastructure, this is a specific thing that was found that needs to be addressed.
Our lift stations, the wet wells at the, at the pump stations to rehabilitate them, and then the manholes that have deteriorated over time and need drastic repair throughout the system. Give you a little broader scope. We've got over 700 manholes in the city. This is one-third of the lift stations, or less than a third of the lift stations that we have, and we have miles and miles of sewer line that are going to need some attention. So this is a starting point to go ahead and push this effort forward and go ahead and try to tackle the most severe things that, that we've been able to determine, and like Tom said, to try to reduce the leakage, because one of the goals that we have, too, is trying to take some of this inflow and infiltration off the north plant. So if, the sooner that we can get this initiative started, I think it will serve us better in the long run.
So it cost us, it cost us money to fix it, but it's costing us not to fix it, because we're treating that water. Pete, would you tell people what Jifa is, and do we have that loan now? I mean, it says the funding source is Jifa, so how does that happen? And what is Jifa?
Well, Jifa is Georgia Environmental Financing Authority, and...
And that's our funding source, so...
Right, so we'll have to make application to Jifa for the funding.
So that's a question. We don't have any Jifa loans right now, correct? We've lied to some.
We have two, we have two applications that, for water and sewer, that have already been accepted as far as the application for a certain amount of money.
Yeah, all the projects that we've started on are being paid out of pocket, and then when we borrow the money, we'll get reimbursed. So Edge Road Water Line for Liberty Pool, the Crossing Under the Railroad, the Water Plant Engineering, this, I mean, the, the north plant work that Paul has done are all, are all coming out of the Water and Sewer Fund.
So Jifa's the funding, but we may front it upsource? I mean, we may source it upfront?
We're having to pay for it upfront.
Tom, how confident are we, are we that we're going to get the Jifa funding to pay us back?
On, on the part that we've done, we're very confident. The question is going to come when we actually have to do the, the first big-ticket item, which is the actual construction of the improvements at the water treatment plant. So the engineering is, what, $350,000? What's the engineering on the water plant? Is it more than that?
Uh-huh. For, it was 400, not, yeah, less, yeah, 442,000 for construction. I mean, for engineering and permitting on that.
So the budget on that is 4.8 million, the estimate. So the engineering is roughly 10% of the construction cost, estimated cost. So we're, we're basically footing the bill for all of the, the design and engineering on the front end, and then recouping the money when we get to the actual construction project and borrow the funds. So we, we know we can do that part. The part that we don't see is the money to do the same thing for the north plant. It's even more expensive. It's $7 million, maybe. We don't, we don't see that money.
But as it relates to this agenda item, we're talking about lining sewer manholes, pump stations, which is a part of our infiltration problem, which is, Tom said, we're treating rainwater, basically. So not only is that inefficient, a bad use of a water reclamation facility, but it also, quite frankly, increases the capacity, I mean, reduces the capacity of our water reclamation facility.
For real customers.
You ready for a motion?
We're also pumping, paying to pump the stuff over and over again. So not only are we treating rainwater, but we're paying for power to pump it all over the city.
Yeah, I am ready for a motion.
Okay, I move that we approve the amendment to the agreement with Brennan Jones Engineering Association, LLC, in the amount not to exceed $35,500.
Have a motion to second. Discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous.
Thank you.
Tab E, City Manager. Item number one.
I have three items tonight. The first is a modification to our plan document. Behind our self-funded plan, there is a document that details what we will and will not pay for, and this item is a request by staff to modify that document to exclude from our coverage the Northside Hospital System. For a little background, when we go to Tanner or Wellstar or other area facilities, a typical billing would be based on a figure of generally something in the 600 to 800% of Medicare. And using the reference-based pricing company that we hired, we generally negotiate that to 140 to 150% of Medicare when it's paid. So you can see that there's a, there's a big difference between what the hospital bills an insurance program and what they'll accept. Northside does not play that, and so we've had, we've had a large invoice there that was billed at 900 and something percent, and they offered a 5% discount to, you know, 810% or something, which is more than the gross bill that we get most of the time from the other places. And they have taken this position throughout their system. They're heavily north and northeast Atlanta, so we don't have typically anybody incurring costs there, but we would like to see council authorize us to exclude them from the plan.
And this is a comment to you, but I see in your presentation, I was going to ask you this question. In one and a half years, we've only had two claims at the Northside facility. So my question was going to be, how is this going to impact our employees? So we've only had two in, in two and a half, in a year and a half. Questions for staff?
Yeah, I thought that was interesting, but one of the things I always worry about with insurance, because it happens to me and it happens to anybody, is you don't know where... where secondary, you know, I guess if you have samples, tissue samples or something, they end up over at Northside, and you, you have no idea that that's where it went.
Right.
I'm concerned that our patient, our, our staff end up footing the bill for those, having never known that that's where that, that was gonna go. I don't think that anybody probably goes to Northside Hospital. My guess is that this is something secondary to whatever their original, you know, visit was. So, I, I just wanna make sure that we don't, we don't leave anybody, two people in a year and a half. I mean, I guess it's a pretty safe, but I think that that probably was not the situation where a person went to Northside Hospital.
It, it was a big expense, so, but I don't know if it was inpatient or not.
Yeah, but I will say, when you go to one of those doctors, whether it's Peachtree Orthopedic or whatever, I've done that. I was at Emory, and I, my knee surgery was in Tucker, where their orthopedic hospital is. We've been up at Piedmont in our family before, because that's where the Atlanta doctor was. And so, you could, you know, depending on who the specialist you went to see.
Right.
You know, you could end up in one of those hospitals, being cared for there for that reason.
We, we will continue to cover a Northside physician that doesn't use a Northside facility, and we would also cover Northside ER.
I, I saw that as well.
Right. So, if you get taken there by an ambulance, then...
Yeah, that's different.
That's just our, you know, we're just gonna have to deal with it.
Questions for staff?
Is this, is this the only hospital we're excluding?
So far.
Think about it. If more of it worked like this, with other people doing the same thing, they'd be thinking about modifying their prices, because they'd have to be more competitive. Right now, they won't negotiate with us at all, except give us a little token.
Well, they might, but if you go and get a colonoscopy over here at this Mirror Lake facility, and, and something ends up at Northside, you had no idea that that was gonna happen. You went to a Villarica physician.
And I have battled those things before. You ever had surgery with insurance, and all of a sudden, they used an anesthesiologist that wasn't in-network? You have to fight those things.
Right.
Because you'd have no way to know, when you were at an approved hospital, they were gonna do that. And so, it's worth fighting, because you can save a lot of money by even going to a surgical center instead of a hospital. We've got, if we're gonna, if we're gonna keep prices low for our employees, we've got to do some other innovative stuff, too.
Okay. I'll make a motion to modify employee's health insurance plan document, effective July the first, two thousand and nineteen, to exclude Northside Hospital facilities except for emergency home services.
Second.
Have a motion to second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Item number two.
Item number two is a recommendation to approve a contract to modify the sidewalk in the four hundred block on the north side of Main Street. This is an ADA issue, along with a safety issue, as this sidewalk is immediately adjacent to what is now considered part of the Highway sixty-one state route. We have two or three specific problems there. One is, as Ms. Britt mentioned earlier, there's been water leak repair there, so there's asphalt damage in front of the buildings. There's no guard rail or, or handrail or anything to prevent somebody from just walking out into traffic there. There's no transition into the street that runs adjacent to this block. So, there's, there's a number of issues that need to be rectified. We had Hughes Ray design the changes and gave this to two companies to look at that we have experience with. The first one was too busy to deal with it, so they gave it to another company that we don't have experience with. Their quote was forty-two thousand. It was not complete in our mind, in the sense that they would have required Hughes Ray to come back and stake the site. The other quote we got from Danny Lior, who's done, I don't know, half a dozen projects for us since I've been here, and was complete, for forty-seven thousand. And my recommendation, based on our experience, is that we give the contract to Danny Lior.
So, does it cost five thousand dollars to stake that property?
I don't believe so.
Who owns that property?
My understanding is that the railroad owns all the property on either side of the track, up to the front of the buildings on both sides.
Ms. Britt said that she had a zero property line.
Right.
And that does concern me to the extent of who owns that property. And David, would you?
I haven't, I haven't checked the title. I have, in the past, looked at the railroad ownership of the property all throughout, up and down Main Street here. And their, their ownership does go up to the front of a number of these buildings. But given the fact also that that sidewalk was originally put in by the city, has been used by the public, I, I believe that we had, do have some ownership rights in the sidewalk.
Okay. And this water line repair, is there a water line that runs under this sidewalk, or no?
Between the sidewalk and the street.
Okay. So, it's not under the sidewalk. Okay. My concern was really with, with doing work on property that we don't own. And David, you have, in an earlier conversation, indicated much what you just said, we probably do.
Hey, I think we have the right to do work on the sidewalk there, and in fact, probably have the obligation if it's unsafe.
Well, obligation is a key word.
Yeah.
That doesn't leave a lot of room.
I'm thinking that we're gonna have to do railroad and GDOT permits here, too, before we start.
Now, this is not a budgeted item, so how would you pay for this?
The way that, the way that we set up SPOSS is we have, Sarah, help me, a hundred and twenty-five thousand for sidewalks. So, there's sidewalk money in the budget, but not specified for a particular block in downtown. So, there's money available in SPOSS for that. And I've indicated on here what that would be coded to, if you wanna do it that way. There's no general fund money in the budget for, for this amount of sidewalk work, I don't think, still in this year's budget.
It seems to me, if we're gonna do what's needed in the downtown, even in the long run, there's a real problem with it not being compliant, ADA compliant. But aside from that, if we do that Renaissance Plan or something like it, I can imagine that we're not gonna, we're gonna leave these sidewalks right beside the road there with no type of curb or any protection from. So, I see this as stuff we're probably gonna have to do all over town to a degree. This just seems to be an issue that's come up, because it has the ADA problem also. But I see it as something we'd eventually have to do anyway. You ready for a motion?
Well, hold on a second. With regard to the five thousand dollars, do you still recommend, even though you don't think that it would cost five thousand dollars to stake the property, that we go with this contractor?
Right. I, I don't see that, that the four, the five thousand savings minus whatever the staking would cost is worth dealing with somebody who we have no experience with whatsoever.
And I, I like to weigh in on that answer, too. The problem that you have, when you have one company staking something and another company trying to follow that, is that the guys that went out and, the stakes in are wrong, and the guys that are coming in to do the work do it wrong, then you gotta figure out who was wrong. And, and I don't really care who was wrong in that situation, I just want it done. And so, the person that's doing the work, if they do the grade stakes, and the grade stakes are wrong, they're on the hook for making it right. That's my experience.
I think that's a given that makes sense. I, it, it always bothers me when we don't have multiple bids, though. And here we are, again, with one bid, and we've been trying to get three. Well, one that we excluded, because it didn't, it wasn't apples to apples. So, but I mean, I, I can support this, because the city attorney says that this is city property, so.
We only had two people bid for it. I mean, did...
Right. We only knew two companies that, that we had experience with, that, that would even do anything like this.
And as Tom said in the meeting yesterday, it's getting harder and harder to find people to do our projects, because everybody's building and doing stuff now. I, I move that we authorize the city manager to engage D.L. Masonry, LLC, to demo and rebuild the sidewalk on the north side of the four hundred block of Main Street, based on an engineering design created by U. Ray, Hughes Ray, for an amount not to exceed forty-seven thousand.
Second.
Have a motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Item number three.
All right. Item number three is a more complicated proposition. We've got two unrelated items that I'm bringing together here. One is, we need to resurface the parking lot at the old library in order to accommodate southeast trans in their lease of the old library. So, that's one thing. At the same time, we still have an open issue with Community Square Boulevard, which is the road in front of the post office. So, there's a couple of ways we can go with this. And if you look at the quote, there's, there are, there's an independent quote for the parking lot, an independent quote for Community Square, and then a different, more expensive quote, that would be a more complete rework of the parking lot, but that would save us money on Community Square. And I'm not recommending that, but I showed you all of that. Okay? So, what I'm recommending is the cheaper of the two approaches to the parking lot, the PermaFlex treatment. But I've also presented you Community Square, so that you can talk about that. It came in way below what we had been told when we were talking to C.W. Matthews about this. You remember back, you know, in the, the previous paving cycle that we did in eighteen? And because of that, if you, if you would consider that, the way that I would recommend you do it is you would approve that on the condition, one, obviously, that Dr. Camp is gonna deed the property to us. And two, if you want to set some kind of goals now, based on what you know the price to be of what participation would look like, then we could go back to Camp, the, the owner of the building the Jim's in, and the owner of the building that the post office is in, if you want to mandate participation and make executing all this conditional on all that getting done. Because I, I think that was the concern that came up when we talked about it before, was we didn't wanna foot the bill for the whole thing, 'cause it's really, it's, we didn't create the problem. You know, we're just trying to solve it.
Why is R and P paving the only bid we had for paving the parking lot?
I'm, I have to have this done, the parking lot part, by the end of this month. And I, so I didn't have time to bid it.
Okay.
They, they're, they're in there renovating now, and they want, they're planning to move in first of July.
Weren't you going to talk to the other parties involved?
I was, when I thought it was gonna be a hundred grand, but when I found out that it's this, then, you know, I don't know what your thinking is now. Like, you wanna get ten grand participation, and all of us split it four ways, and we pay ten, the post office pays ten, Camp pays ten, and the, the Jim pays ten? I mean, is that, you wanna, you wanna go that route?
Well, in looking at your, your proposals here, it looks to me like these could be separated.
Yes.
And it wouldn't cause any, any problems with what we're doing. Because...
It's just gonna be more expensive.
...the southeast trans deal, we need to probably get that moving tonight.
Right.
And I have fewer concerns there, even though we do only have one bid. You just explained that you're in a time crunch. I, I wanted to see three bids. I always wanna see three bids. And for paving and this kind of work, I know we can get three bids. On the other piece, though, it does concern me that we don't have an agreement with, at least the city attorney has not reviewed any agreement for the city to take ownership of that property. We don't know what that would look like. And we've made no attempts so far to see if we can get buy-in from some of the beneficial property owners, because the city has no direct benefit to this work here. There is some existential benefit in that the city uses, you know, city citizens use the road. I would like to see us separate those two and, and move on the, the library, and then discuss the, the Community Square piece separately.
Are you making a motion?
Well, I'd like some discussion about that, and see if anybody else feels like they wanna do that, or if they wanna try to lump it together and move on.
Let me, let me, let me say this. What we have tried to do in the last three or four months is ask questions of staff, and then see if we get a motion either to move forward with it, or to just not do it at all. And then we have discussion. If y'all wanna, we've cut the meeting time down by doing that. That's typical Robert's Rules of Order, but if y'all wanna handle it another way, we can certainly do that. This is, y'all have a decision.
I would like to see him break off the library, 'cause that is critical right now to an agreement we have, and move on that. But the other one, I believe, Councilman McGill is correct, we need to separate that off and do something else with it.
Is that a motion?
It's a motion.
Second.
Have a motion to second. Would you read the motion back, please?
Danny Gordon made a motion to separate and move on the library.
Have a motion to second.
Just, just for the record, because I don't think that's still very clear, motion would be that we authorize the city manager to engage RP Paving Solutions to resurface the parking lot at the old library in the amount of...
Forty-seven thousand five hundred.
Forty-seven thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars.
Okay. That sounds like a better motion. I'll take that.
Okay. A motion to second. As far as discussion is concerned, I wanna make a comment first. I'm a former employee at RP Paving Solutions. I have not been employed there now in several, several months. I do not receive any compensation whatsoever from RP Paving Solutions. I wanna make that statement, so that everybody knows that. As far as discussion is concerned, one thing that you need to understand is that the reason, one of the reasons this bid, when I looked at it from RP, the bid went straight to Tom. I didn't see the bid until he showed it to me. But one of the things in the bid was that they're, by doing the FDR work, which is full-depth reclamation, on the library parking lot, they're gonna use their excavated material for street repairs on Community Square, which is gonna save eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. Now, I just wanna make that known, that, you know, when you go out for bids for this, if we get five bids, and they end up being what it was to start with, it was a hundred thousand dollars, then we've blown an opportunity, just because this bid is for thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and five dollars to do the Community Square Boulevard. I do understand that we need to get an agreement from Dr. Camp. He owns the property, and obviously, we would not do work on private property. But I will tell you that twenty-five percent of the complaints that I get personally are complaints about people going to that post office. And that post office is not owned by the federal government. They, they leased that, and I do not believe, I hope I'm wrong, but I do not believe that, that Express Fitness feels like that they have any buy-in on property that they, they have no ownership of. With that said, I just, I'm just saying that for the council's benefit. That is a concern in the city, and although it does not belong to the city of Villarica, and I've said that five hundred times, no one understands that. All they understand is that they live in the city of Villarica, and they try to get to the post office and the other businesses behind that, and they could not get to those. In hindsight, the city probably should not have allowed those other buildings, including the post office and Express Fitness, to be tied on to a private street.
That's right.
That's what happened here. That's what we're dealing with. But that's not atypical. We deal with that every single day. Decisions were made with water lines, with sewer lines, on private property, that we're having to work through right now. I understand the concerns of the council completely, but I also understand that our traveling public does, needs some way to get to that post office and to those other businesses. Those are my comments.
Yeah, that is true. But we also need to move forward on, on that street, but we need to move forward with Camp and the rest of them. So, there's no way we can tackle it right now without some kind of agreement. But we do need to go ahead and pave the parking lot.
Yeah. My point is, you're losing eighty-seven hundred and eighty-five dollars upfront.
Yeah, but we don't have an agreement on the other street, so we can't work on that anyway.
And we didn't, I don't see that eighty-seven hundred dollar piece. Tom, you said that these were separated out.
Says we were also quoted thirty-seven hundred, thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and five dollars for full-depth proclamation of Community Square Boulevard from the post office. If we select FDR for the library parking lot, we can reuse the excavated material for street repair, reducing the combined cost by eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Which in a nutshell was, if we spend a lot more, I'm not saying we're not getting more, if we spent a lot more on the library project, they will give a discount on the other one, but it's still gonna be more than if we follow the recommendation...
Right.
...of doing the not entire demo at the library. So, we would be spending more, even though they would give us a discount on that other project. I have two questions, a discussion. You said something, but you didn't get to finish, I don't think, about it would be more expensive. If we split these two items, is it going to be more expensive because... If we split these two items, is it going to be more expensive, because sometimes company, if you give them two jobs, or you give them five jobs...
Yeah, they're going to mobilize twice.
So, um, and, if we do, can we say yes on the other one? Can we still follow up immediately afterwards, take up the second item, and reattach it if we want, with conditions?
I don't even see how we can do the other items.
Not, okay, not reattach it, but take it up. Okay, so, we go ahead and we give the okay for the library. We give the okay for the library, job to be done, depending on which job we want at the library. Okay, we take it, and we make it separate. After we address that, then, can we then still address Community Square separately, and decide what we want to do with that? Which means it may still get done by the same company, depending on what the consensus is, and make a decision on that one also.
But how can we even do the other project, when we haven't even talked to the owner of the road?
With conditions now.
We've talked to him.
Okay, do we have an agreement with him?
Talking to him, I mean, not we...
We do not have an agreement. But Tom and I met with him, and he said that he was willing to give it to the city, which why wouldn't he?
I've heard that face-to-face myself.
The question is, are we, are we going to get any money out of him to repair the road, too, in addition to giving us away?
Well, him and the other benefactors.
The other two.
Yeah, and there's a good chance that won't happen.
Not to mention the fact that the city...
Amongst all three.
Council, which they can waive, has a policy not to take roads that are not up to code. We've got many streets, all through this city, that we will not take, that people live on, because they're not up to code. We, what we're looking at doing here is taking private property, that we don't even have an agreement on, and then spending all of this money to bring it up to code, not knowing what we're going to get into out there, when it really comes time to pull that up. Anybody who drives in front of that post office, and I have a box there, I go there every day, knows that that road got repaired a couple of years ago, and it is back to as bad a condition as, as it has ever been. So, something is not right over there, anyway. I think that we ought to separate these two out, and, and really, I wouldn't want to do either of these, if it wasn't for the Southeast Trans deal, that we really need to move on. So...
I'm willing to separate them, out of any courtesy, because somebody might be for one of them, and not for the other, and I think that's appropriate in any legislation.
We have a motion to second, to separate the two, repair the parking lot, and just to make sure, because Tom actually talked about two things. So, what you are authorizing is to do a PermaFlex repair, not a FDR repair, on the library parking lot.
Forty-seven thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars, yes.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
A motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Next?
Can we take up the secondary item?
If you want to.
I might need your help on this. Because there's no type of motion, and it's probably going to need conditions. And this would have to do with repairing Community Square in front of the post office, with the conditions that the contract that's prepared for receiving the property has approval, gets approval? By the council. What else? Is there something else I'd want to?
I, I don't...
Obviously, it has to be given to us. We know that verbally, but it has to be in writing.
Based, based on what I think you're trying to do, I think that you just have to direct the staff to go sit down and negotiate with Dr. Camp, to see what type of an agreement we can reach out and bring back to you.
And the other businesses that are associated with the road.
Right.
Is it what?
And any type of contribution we could get from the other business.
Because with companies, if you do things at once, a lot of times, you save money if you do things all at once. It might cost you more in the long run, if they're not doing both.
Well, you just voted against that.
No, no, she's taken it.
No, I approved the one, and I asked if we could take up the secondary one. If, if this gets approved, they could both get done.
No.
Well, that wasn't my understanding.
What you just approved, that's why I asked that. What you just approved was a PermaFlex overlay.
For the library.
That has nothing to do with what needs to be done on the Community Square. That's an FDR repair. So, there's no savings, there's no, that's a different, that's two different items.
Okay, so, so did I misunderstand you?
The savings would be in not having two mobilization fees. But the eighty-seven, eighty-five savings would have come from using the material from the lib, library parking lot.
Right.
We're not going to, and I didn't recommend that, because it's...
Right. It's a lot more expensive.
Not twice as much, but almost.
So, there still could be a saving, as far as mobilization, if they're done at the same time.
And we could delay, we could delay the library project, too.
So, it's possible, if we approve the second one, that it, that could still occur?
I don't see how we can approve the second one, until they get through, doing the research and talking to the people.
The negotiations, and coming up with a framework for...
Well, to be honest, I thought, I thought the speaking to these businesses was supposed to occur weeks ago.
Yeah, I have not talked to him, because of the price that came in on the project. So, and I'm still not clear on what you expect, because I just don't know how practical it's going to be, to get any of these guys to participate with us in this project.
I mean, I see your point, but my, my point is that the city has no facilities back there. There is nothing that the city is leading to going back to there and fixing that road.
We're only...
You don't pay your water bill back there. We, we don't have any facilities back there. So, where is it that it's the city's total responsibility?
Because, because the citizens view the post office as part of the city.
And our citizens are impacted by it every day. It is a pain, I get your point, it's a pain, but...
What you're saying is...
Our citizens deal with it all the time, so it's in the interest of our citizens.
You're, I think your statement is absolutely true, and probably not relevant, because people don't care about the fact of who...
Some don't, but some people care that you spend fifty thousand dollars.
No, no, I, I understand that, too. Yeah, this is not an easy decision.
Tom, has there been a discussion about using that road in the future to access that property in the back that belongs to the housing authority?
I have, I have talked to...
Going right through that process?
Yeah, to Dr. Camp about extending the road through his parking lot.
No, I'm, I'm talking about behind that, the Dick Chambers property, straight ahead, not turning...
Yeah, 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 to go through the left side of the parking lot. Yeah, I mean, we talked to him about that.
Okay.
For what?
To loop that. Right now, Horace Luther comes in on one side, but you can't get between the two, except to go through the regions, building parking lot.
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager and staff to go and negotiate with the other businesses on Community Square. And it would have to come back to us.
And to hammer out a deal with Dr. Camp.
A deal for...
The land.
The land.
Oh, yeah, well, see, based on what we know, from about three of us hearing it verbally, that he's willing to, I'm kind of, have that expectation, that he's more than willing to deed that section to us.
Verbal's a little different than written, a little...
Absolutely.
I think what you're charging...
I still have expectation, though.
You're charging Tom and the staff to go negotiate a deal, and bring it back to you, and have you approve it.
Have a motion, we'll hear a second.
Second.
Have a motion, multiple seconds. Further discussion? Not all in favor? It is unanimous. David, I believe we have executive session.
Yep, we got one real estate.
There's not one on this agenda.
There is on this one.
How come we got the wrong agenda?
I'm running the meeting, so we've got an executive session, unless I'm...
Okay.
David, do we have executive session?
Yeah, there, there is a, a motion, at least on the, the electronic agenda, that we have an executive session to discuss the purchase or disposal of real estate.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss or, or vote to authorize negotiations to purchase, dispose of, or lease property, as provided in Georgia Code Section 50-14-3B, 1B.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor? We are in executive session. Stick around.
Interesting, nobody knows.